Hey, looks like meeting is now streaming live on YouTube. So if that is the case, we want to welcome everybody to our Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission Meeting Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. And you'll notice it's not at City Hall, but we are moving way into the 21st century here and we're doing it via Zoom. And it's been determined that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So in light of the coronavirus and so a meeting and a recording is being held tonight, it'll be available to the public. And so we'll just make that make that concern there known to everybody. And once again, let me thank everybody for for being here this evening. And I would note that we do have a quorum. We have everybody here tonight. So there's no need for a roll call there. So Commissioner Lee, would you just open us with a word of prayer tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Gracious Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have shown to us. And Father, through this pandemic that we are facing, that has so stirred our hearts and changed our normal walks in this community. We ask that we seek your guidance through it, that we seek your grace through it, that we seek your healing through it. Now, Father, as we conduct the business of this city, may everything that we say and do honor you. And may what we do be in the best interest of the citizens of this community, for it's in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Appreciate that. First item of business tonight that we'd like to go over is we are going to pass a resolution tonight. If it's the commission's will concerning public hearings and there's a resolution that you should have in your packet. I will go ahead and read it since the people that are watching this do not really have a copy of it in front of them. But it's a resolution deferring all submittals to the Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission, which require a public hearing until May 4th, 2020, to be heard at the next regularly scheduled meeting in June. And so the resolution is this, it's differing all submittals to the Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission. Says whereas the governor of Tennessee has issued an executive order number 16, which requires government entities to conduct businesses remotely by electronic means to the greatest extent possible, and discourages large gatherings of people in the same physical location. And whereas the regional planning commission has determined that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And whereas the submittals which require a public hearing do not conform with state and federal guidance regarding the COVID-19 virus outbreak, therefore be it resolved by the Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission that all submittals to the Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission, which require a public hearing are hereby deferred until May 4th, 2020, to be heard at the June 2nd, 2020 meeting or at such time it is deemed safe and possible to host regularly scheduled meetings at a physical location. And it will be adopted the 7th day of April in Hendersonville, Summer County, Tennessee. That is the resolution before you. Do we have a motion to accept this resolution? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by whom?
Ms. Longmire.
Okay, Ms. Longmire, do I have a second, Mr. Lee? You second that? Okay. Is there any discussion about this resolution? All right, hearing none. We need to do a roll call vote just to keep everything on the up and up. So Ms. Lauren, would you just go ahead and do a roll call vote on this? We'll call the question.
Yes, sir. Altizer.
Is there Altizer? Does he need to hit his mic?
He might need to hang on. See if I can see him.
Can you hear me?
Oh, nobody didn't. Okay, we got you now.
Yes.
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 Hardcastle.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Lee. Longmire.
Yes.
Silkwood.
Yes.
Stringfellow.
Yes.
Woodcock.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
All right, that's 10-0.
Hey, that resolution passes and once again, that will be will be taken up at our meeting June unless something else needs to happen. All right, so we're going to move down now to our request for information assistance. Does any of our commissioners have any request information? Right, hearing none. We're going to move down to the additions to the agenda. There are none. We do have the minutes from March 3rd, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Who to approve?
Who to approve?
I can.
Second by Ms. Silkwood. Okay, any questions? All in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Just say no right now. Okay.
Darlene abstain.
Darlene abstains. Okay, very good. All right. We have several things on the consent agenda. Durham Phase 1, Section 10, Final Platt. Durham Phase 2, Section 27, Final Platt. Millstone Phase 12, Final Platt Renewal. And I think that all of these consent agenda items, they've agreed to all staff comments. Are there any? Are there any of these items that any commission would like to pull off of the consent agenda? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to accept the consent?
Move to group and approve.
Move to a group and approve by Ms. McCormick. Do we have a second? By Mr. Altizer. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, Ms. Berry, would you do a roll call on that, please?
Yes, sir. Altizer.
Yes.
Brian McCormick.
Yes.
Hardcastle.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Silkwood.
Yes.
Stringfellow.
Yes.
Woodcock.
Yay.
Jenkins.
Yes.
All right, that's 10.
Okay, thank you very much. It's approved. All right, let's move on to the site plans and we're going to go to the Stadium Drive Town Homes. And invite everybody to pull that up in their staff reports. And I would ask Mr. Free, Mr. Free, who's going to be handling this one?
Grant Green can give a brief overview of that particular project.
Okay, Mr. Green, floor is yours. Mr. Green? You're muted. There you go.
Great, good deal. Thank you, sir. This is a site plan for four townhome units to be located on Stadium Drive south of intersection with Plumley. And properties on Old Town Residential and townhomes are allowed by right in that zoning district. Old Town has residential has increased design standards for townhomes, including 50% requirement for requested required brick percentage. They've actually, their initial submittal had had hardy and they've actually went to a submittal that primarily bear on this. And this does have one access point for the four units. That leads to the back and that access is a one car rear loaded garage on each of the units.
Okay. They've agreed to all staff comments. Do we have the applicant in the meeting tonight? Anybody from representing the applicant? Want to make sure that they're heard if they'd like to be.
I'm here.
Okay, Andy, did you got anything you'd like to say about the submittal that's before us? Looks like you've agreed to all staff comments.
No, sir, we don't have anything to add.
Okay. Any questions from either the commissioners to either Mr. Green or Mr. Leith? All right, I hear no questions. So in that case, do I have a motion to accept this site?
I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Who's that? Ms. Big Silkwood, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Are these going to be under OAKPOT or will these be rental units?
Mr. Leith?
They could be either or, to be quite honest with you. The developer, the owner developer right now. He may keep a few of them. He may sell a few of them. He's not, he's undecided. They could be either or.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Silkwood. Any more questions?
Okay. What? Just a question. I believe it's in Old Town Residential, they could even be an Airbnb or vacation home rental unit. Could they not?
That's Old Town commercial that that's allowed in, but Old Town Residential, I do not believe.
Okay, it's not. Okay, good.
Okay, thank you. Good questions. Hearing no other questions. Do we have a motion to accept this with all staff comments?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Lee moves it. Who seconds it?
Second.
Ms. Stringfellow seconds it?
No, that was Beth.
Ms. Longmire, okay. I have saw two hands, two screens light up here. Ms. Longmire. She seconds it. And so with that, we have no more discussion. Ms. Berry, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Altizer.
Yes.
Brian McCormick.
Yay.
Hardcastle.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Silkwood.
Yes.
Stringfellow.
Yes.
Woodcock. Oh, he's muted.
Mr. Woodcock? Yes or no on that?
No, I apologize. No.
Nope, thank you very much.
That's nine and one.
Okay, it passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Leith. Thank you for being here. We're going to move on now to our Jackson property preliminary plat and Mr. Free, who's going to handle this one?
Grant Green did the review, but I'll I'll do the overview of this one.
Yes, there was quite a lot in the history there. So I think it'd be good for you to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, this is definitely a unique piece of property and everybody can kind of remember. And I think that Mr. Jackson's here on the on the Zoom meeting tonight. But this is the property that we had Jackson Town Homes that had the townhomes that were originally approved in the rear of property. And then the owner was wanting to group those, the properties that we're discussing tonight with those to do to do townhome development. That did not receive approval to to make those changes to that. And what the owner's doing tonight, it really doesn't have anything to do with any specific use that I'm aware of, but the owner maybe could discuss that. But what they're doing is that just that piece of property in the front, not the back piece that had all of the already stuff, the things that were already approved for townhome development. But the front piece where there's a house and there's a little garage that was a barber shop. That's the piece of property that they're dividing. That front piece, which is lot number one, is about an acre. And then the rear piece, lot number two, is about 2.3 acres. There's an existing access easement that they're going to construct a private road there to the east of the property where the cursor is going up and down there. And to provide access. And this will, this will create two lots. We're currently right now, there is one single lot. And I can answer any questions. One thing I wanted to hit on and we kind of hit the history of this, this has a history where this was one of the, one of the original early planned developments. And a lot of things changed after this was approved way back when. And there's a lot of different uses that are that are approved on on this. So it's a little different than a lot of the other planned developments that we're that we're used to. And I can answer any questions anybody would have. And also the owner, and I think the owner's representative is is online as well.
I think what I'd like to hear from Mr. Jackson just for a few moments, if we might. Mr. Jackson, thank you for being here tonight. Or can you hear me all right? Can you? I don't know if he's there.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, Mr. Jackson, yeah. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Hey, if you would, just in a nutshell, I think Mr. Freeze kind of explained this. I believe this has come before us before, but can you just kind of explain to us right now, what what are your goals for this? And what what are you thinking that you would like to see there?
Honestly, right now, we're not really sure. Right now, what we're trying to do is just subdivide that back block. So can ultimately help the infrastructure cost of the road and offset some expenses. So we're just kind of in a holding pattern really until we kind of come up with an idea whether it's, you know, selling that lot individually to another user. I've talked to Stony Brook on several different occasions and I'm discussing some things with them as well, but as of right now, this was the first step.
Okay, the only thing I maybe we should discuss, and I think you already know this, but in the staff report, the item number eight is very telling. The following are the findings and determinations after an exhaustive search of the record of the record for 660 East Main Street. Property zone office plan development schematic plan, development plan approved by the board commissioners has not been revoked, remains in effect. Even though the elementary lack of clarity in the approved plan did not meet minimum standard for submission, such plans were submitted in 82, 1982 and approved. Schematic development plan approved by the board of commissioners on 9/28/1982 is considered equivalent to preliminary development plan today. Users allowed under this approved plan shall be recognized and limited to only uses listed as permitted uses with the current general commissioner, general commercial rather GC zoning classification prior to development of anything on that property that is a recognized permitted use, a final development plan, a site plan meeting today's requirements for each would need to be submitted and approved. Is that your understanding, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure because these are the findings and you know, we approved this tonight. Anything that would come forward after this point would have to fall under that. I think you already knew that, but I wanted just to make sure that we're on the same page.
We do. Yes, thanks for clarifying.
I appreciate that. All right.
We are.
Any commissioners, Mr. Free?
Yeah, I might just mention because this is, and this is just a very unique property, which I think Mr. Jackson can attest to. It's been, it's been something with that history of it. There's not another specific piece of property that's in town that that meets all the different things that are going on with this. So this is very unique, although the submission of the preliminary plat, I might mention everything's within order. So Mr. Jackson has met all of the requirements for a preliminary plat.
Yes, that sounds good. That sounds good. I just wanted to clarify on the findings and your determinations that every party was knows that what's going on.
Yes.
Okay. Are any more questions for either Mr. Free or Mr. Jackson?
I have a quick question, please.
Mr. Hardwick.
So the only thing we're doing tonight is simply dividing the parcel into two parcels.
Yes, that's it. That's it.
That's correct. And actually, this is just the first step. When a property is subdivided like this, that involves a public or a private road, they have to do a preliminary plat, which is what they're doing tonight. And once that gets approved, then they have to submit their construction plans for the road and the and the development. Then they come back to the planning commission for approval of a final plat.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Hardwick?
I think so. It sounds like we are, we're making it sort of one parcel, two parcels. But a construction plat has to come back. So it just seems that that construction plat could come back next time, or it could come back two years from now, correct?
Well, I might clarify that when I'm talking about a construction plans, that's that's regarding the road and the drainage and and things like that. And then there could be a final plat, which then they could actually record the plats and and the one property becomes two. Then after that, if they have an approved use, it's allowed on that lot. Then they would submit a commercial site plan, and then that would come back before the planning commission.
Okay, so we're really not changing anything at this point, other than we're just making it two parcels.
That's correct. Yes.
Yep. I'd like to say something. Mr. Ms. Longmire?
I just want a little bit of clarification on this. When you're talking about schematic plan and the development plan that were approved in 1982?
Yes, ma'am.
Um. Is that just going to carry over with this or at some point does it get adjusted in some way?
Just free.
Yeah, if actually before before a site plan would be done, then a final development plan would need to be done on the property. Currently, as it sits now with this old schematic plan, we're equivalent, we're equivalent, we're giving that equivalence of a preliminary development plan. So right now, it has an approved preliminary development plan. And if they develop something similar to the layout of what the preliminary development plan it currently is with a final development plan, then then they would be following the proper process. But it, but at this time, as Mr. Jackson said, they don't really have a particular project. But until they have that, then we'll determine whether they can, they can meet the guidelines of the approved preliminary development plan, even though it's, 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 it's very rudimentary and it's, and it's, and it's layout. Or if they need to come back and do a revised preliminary development plan, if there's a radical change.
So is that, is there something that would have been allowable under the 1982 approval that wouldn't be allowable today? Or is there something today that is allowable that would have been excluded in 82? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think I know what you're saying. And Grant, you might want to chime in on this. But I believe on our research on that, it went back to the use, the previous uses, wasn't it? Not just.
You got to undo your mic.
I think definitely, Grant, the the general commercial uses today are certainly allowed. But there's additional uses that would be allowed tied back into the old 19, pre 1985 ordinance.
Yes, Sydney done a lot of research on this as well. This was one of the things that, you know, at the time of the approval, the uses that were in effect would be allowed, which are generally mostly for the most part, general commercial uses that that we would have today. But but you know, any, any, anything that's been approved or added to that general commercial sense is not, not.
That's perfect. I'll give you a good, I'll give you a good example and tell me if I'm wrong about this, Grant. But vacation rental is not allowed within the, on that property.
Correct, because that happened in 2016.
Yeah, because that was a new use that was added in 2016. So that's, that's one of the commercial uses that would be allowed, but that currently is is not allowed on this piece of property. It's very confused. It's very confusing. And that's why whenever, whenever Mr. Jackson finds a buyer for the property, it has a specific use, we're going to have to really do some research and make sure that that specific use is allowed.
That's one of the reasons why I brought what I brought up because, you know, I think we need to begin this process with the end in mind. And I think Jackson's very well aware and and I just want to make sure that going forward, since we're just essentially what Mr. Hardwick said, we're just putting two lots that have won tonight, but as we go forward, I want us to be able to have clarity as to what happens. And I think in the report on the findings and terminations, it really does give us a great roadmap as to what will go forward. And as long as that's understood, I think we're good to go. I think we are. Are there any more questions or comments from anybody in the commission? Okay, hearing none. They've agreed with all staff comments. Do we have a motion to accept the preliminary plat? Jackson property.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved, Mr. Free. Second by whom?
Second, Darlene.
Darlene Stringfellow, okay. We have a motion, a second. Is there any more discussion? All right, hearing none. Ms. Berry, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Altizer.
Yes.
Brian McCormick.
Yay.
Hardcastle.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Silkwood.
Yes.
Stringfellow.
Yes.
Woodcock.
Yay.
Jenkins.
Yes.
That's 10.
Okay, thank you so much. Approved. We have several staff reviewed projects that I will not take time to read tonight. The list is pretty long and there's a staff review projects that are pending. And I will not read that list either. You have that front of you. We have no other, other than that before, just before our planning director makes his comments before we adjourn tonight. You know, I think that obviously all of us in this meeting are very concerned about our fellow citizens and about the greater Nashville area and specifically countries, part of our countries of the world and obviously those cities and states that are being so far affected by the COVID virus right now. And I know that thoughts and our prayers are going up for all the families that have lost loved ones due to this outbreak. And you know, I think it's been something that has been introspective for all of us during this time to get with family and to kind of kind of sequester ourselves a little bit and stay home and be thinking through, get bored, whatever we do. But I just want to say, you know, that I appreciate all of our commissioners. And I appreciate all of our staff. You guys do an incredible job. And I want to thank you for all that you do for the city. And thank you for the way that you are, are supporting all the efforts of the city of Hendersonville. We have a fine, fine city. And I just felt compelled tonight to to make that statement, to to give us encouragement, you know. There's so many people out there that are lacking encouragement right now, but I think we're going to come through this. And it's going to be fine. There might be a new normal we have to embrace at some point, and I'm not sure what that looks like yet. But I just wanted to make that comment. And with that, Mr. Free, do you have any comments for us tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of the things that I that I that I kind of want to cover here on my comments. I just want to let everybody know, and I've shared it with several of the commissioners, but the planning staff as of last Wednesday, we're working 100% remotely. So this is something that three weeks ago was not even a possibility, but very quickly the city staff and the planning staff really met, stepped up to the challenge to figure out how to make this work. And this meeting tonight, I mean, this is a milestone from the use of the technology and the ability to get here, the digital packets and things like that. And I really appreciate how the planning commission members have met this challenge as well. Because this is totally different than what we have, what we have done before. But as I said, we're, the planning staff is 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 fully engaged and working on a daily basis. We're, we're being very responsive to any emails and calls that anybody would have. We're continuing to issue permits. We're continuing to review projects and we're actually even continuing to meet with developers and in meetings like this. So a lot of things are still going on. The appetite for moving forward and construction is still very strong in the community. We're still seeing that because our calls have not stopped. The the interest in developing property has not stopped. So I think that's a very, a very positive thing. But I want to, I just want to give just a big pat on the back to our fellow departments in the city government and how well that group of people have come together and work as a team. And I just couldn't be, I couldn't be more prouder of our own planning staff, but I couldn't be any prouder of the teamwork and the camaraderie and just the professionals across the city government that have come together to meet this challenge and not just meet it, I think, not just meet it and get by, but exceed expectation. And I think that's a very, very good, very good thing. But things are continuing to go well and we're looking at for our next meeting. Depending on how everything continues to work out, our meeting in May, it will be a similar meeting to this as well. But that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to to share, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Free. And I got to tell you, you know, of course, I've, I've worked with Zoom quite a bit over the years and in stuff I do for ministry stuff, but I kind of like having all your faces right in front of me there as chairman. So I can see your, I can see your facial expression. So I can know what's going on. I don't know if we're going to be able to fix that or not, but but I will tell you, we're just, we're just excited about the direction of our city. And I just, once again, I'm just compelled to say to us, you know, now is the time where we all need to be encouraging one another. We just do. We just need to encourage. We just do. We just need to encourage one another. And there was a former distinguished person in our city that talked a lot about acts of kindness and being kind. And I think that's an incredible thing that, that we need to show and the Hendersonville people are doing that. Just one story real quick. I was at the Dollar General over by Bluegrass a couple of weeks ago, just popped in there. And there was a gentleman in there who was looking for hand sanitizer. Of course, you know, there's none on the planet right now. And so there was a lady that was standing right there at the cash register. And he didn't have it. He was kind of perplexed. And she looked at him and said the following. She said, sir, if you'll just come out to my car, I have an extra one that I'll give you. And I thought to myself, I thought, you know, that's, that's it right there. That's it. Here was a guy that was really, really kind of not miffed, but he was really animated about that. He wanted, he was up in years. And I thought, that's what we need right there in our city. And so that really made an impact on me right there at the Dollar General in front of Bluegrass there. So so anyways, well, hearing no other comments, any comments from the other commissioners? All right, Ms. McCormick, do you have a motion for us?
Actually, I believe it's Ms. Stringfellow's motion.
Okay, Ms. Stringfellow, do you have a motion for us?
I have, I have a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Have a great week.
Thank you.